Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undegowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have one moment of silence for the -- our Armed Forces have paid the ultimate sacrifice in Afghanistan last week?
I would like to thank Musick Borough officials for hosting us here today for to -- I'd like to just name them: Mayor James Segilia. I apologize in advance if I ruin any of these names. Council President Stan Kenia.
That's good.
I was wrong on the Segilia -- how do you say that?
No, I was --
Oh, was it? Council Vice President Charles Marr. Councilman John Tilbury. Councilman Bob Besiker. Councilman James Norton. Councilman James Thomas. Councilman Scott Flanagan. Borough Manager Jane Sterling. And Borough Solicitor Attorney John Brazil. So, thank you for allowing us to be here today. The reading and the approval of the minutes from the last meeting held on August 18, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion. Second.
On the question, all in favor? Aye. Opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only. Anybody? Proclamation presentation, 21-0232, proclamation declaring the month of September 2021 to be Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month in Lackawanna County. And I believe Commissioner Schirmack will be reading that.
Whereas suicide is the leading cause of death in the United States and in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, one person dies by suicide every four hours, making it the second-leading cause of death for ages 15 to 34, and the fourth-leading cause of death of ages -- for ages 35 to 54. Whereas nearly 5 million people in the United States have lost a loved one to suicide, and each member of our community is a valued and irreplaceable. And talking openly about stress and psychology or psychological health builds trust, reduces the barriers to care, and enables early intervention. And local and statewide suicide prevention efforts should be developed and encouraged to the maximum extent possible. Whereas the Lackawanna-Susquehanna Behavioral Health/Intellectual Disabilities Early Intervention Program works with community stakeholders to assure that each citizen has access to mental health services and mental health crisis intervention to spread the message that helps and resource and that resources are available. Whereas local and statewide suicide prevention efforts should be developed and encouraged to the maximum extent possible. Now, therefore, we, Jerry Notteriani, Debbie Dominic, and myself, Chris Schirmack, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby acknowledge and proclaim September 1st, 2021 as Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month in Lackawanna County.
Proclamation presentation, 21-0233, proclamation declaring the month of September 2021 to be Blood Cancer Awareness Month in Lackawanna County. I have asked our Chief Solicitor Attorney Frank Fraschirio to read this proclamation as he was named 2021's NEPA Man of the Year for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. So, Frank, if you can just explain what that organization is about, and then read the proclamation.
Sure. The Leukemia and Lymphoma Society is essentially an organization that the proclamation indicates exists to find cures and ensure access to treatments for blood cancer patients, not only in Lackawanna County, but all over the country. It's an organization that I've recently become involved with, and it's one that really has grown near and dear to my heart. We have Megan Gallico present with us today, who is an integral part of the LLS and is essentially the Northeast Regional Manager, essentially from Allentown North. She does amazing work, her and her entire team, and it's an organization that certainly I'm proud to be a part of. And I would also note that each of the Commissioners sitting here today were also very kind and gracious and helped contribute to the Man and Woman of the Year campaign that concluded in May. And as a result of their efforts and our efforts and our team's efforts, we were collectively able to raise about $150,000 or $60,000, I think, for the Northeast Region. It's only the third year that it's been in existence up here in the Northeast, and our team collectively was able to raise about $77,000. So, with that, whereas an estimated 1.5 million people in the United States are either living with or are in remission from leukemia, lymphoma, or myeloma, and new cases of blood cancer are expected to account for almost 200,000 new diagnoses in the U.S. in 2021. And whereas every nine minutes, someone in the United States dies from blood cancer. This represents 158 people each day and more than six people every hour. Leukemia, lymphoma, and myeloma are expected to cause the deaths of an estimated 57,750 people in the United States in 2021. And whereas blood cancer patients and their families need help more than ever, the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, LLS, exists to find cures and ensure access to treatments for blood cancer patients, and the County of Lackawanna encourages private efforts to enhance research funding and education programs that are saving lives. And now, therefore, we, Jerry Notteriani, Debbie Dominic, and Chris Schirmack, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby acknowledge and proclaim September 2021 as Blood Cancer Awareness Month in Lackawanna County, and witness whereof they've set their hands and sealed this first day of September 2021. Thank you, Madam Commissioner.
Thank you. Okay. Next, I'm going to call Bridget Kozarowski, who's a state rep for the 114th District and a friend of mine, I'd like to call you, to give a proclamation.
Is this on?
It should be, yeah.
Should be, yeah. Okay. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm pleased to be here today to award this proclamation to my good friend, Jason Kavulich. Many more "whereas's" I will be reading here this morning for him. Unbelievably well-deserved, was an invaluable source for us here in Lackawanna County during COVID-19, so it is an honor for me to do this today for you. Whereas, the House of Representatives of Pennsylvania is always pleased to acknowledge those individuals who, through professional excellence, bring great credit to themselves in this Commonwealth. Jason Kavulich is being honored with the 2021 Friend of County Government Award by the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania. The Friend of County Government Award is lauded as a highest honor CCAP bestowed upon a non-member. Currently serving as Director of Lackawanna County Area Agency on Aging, Mr. Kavulich was selected to receive this award for his leadership, commitment, and creation of the programs in response to COVID-19 pandemic. Throughout his tenure, he has demonstrated remarkable knowledge, ability, and integrity in carrying out his many responsibilities, thus earning the respect and gratitude of all those who received the benefits of his tireless devotion to duty. The House of Representatives of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania congratulate Jason Kavulich upon his well-deserved recognition, proudly notes his exemplary record of service and contributions in keeping with the highest ideals of the Commonwealth, offers best wishes for his continued and many worthwhile and beneficial endeavors. So, thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to -- find my agenda. Yeah, Resolutions. 21-0226, approving the current payables. Brian.
Yes, Madam Commissioner. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approved the following payables: Lackawanna County's general fund numbers, 327515-328061, inclusive, totaling $3,596,681.47. Electric fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $2,893,618.41, adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners, held on September 1st, 2021. Madam Commissioner.
I'm assuming everybody's had an opportunity to review the counts payable, so do I have a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Second. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 21-0227, entering into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Dunmore.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna is hereby authorized to enter into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Dunmore for the Dunmore-Chesnut Street Improvements Project. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna is hereby awarded the following community development block grant construction contract for the Borough of Dunmore to -- for the Borough of Dunmore's Chestnut Street Improvements Projects II, General Construction, Stafursky Paving Company, III Export Lane, Archbald, Pennsylvania, the lowest, most responsible and qualified bidder for $462,364. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 1st, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Brenda Sacco.
Hey, Brenda. Good morning. These are standard agreements for our CDBG program. This resolution states that the county is entering into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Dunmore and a contractor agreement with Stafursky Paving Company. These are the lowest, most responsible bidder for the Chestnut Street Improvement Project, and it is in the amount of $462,364. Any questions?
If no one has any questions, do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion.
Okay. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 21-0228, awarding the Greenways Trails and Recreation Program Grant Construction Contract.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna is hereby awarded the following Greenways Trails and Recreation Program Construction -- Grant Construction Contract for the Scranton Veterans Memorial Park Project Phase II, Site Amenities II, Cholouski Enterprises LLC, 16043, 407 Box 203, Fleetville, PA 18420, the lowest, most responsible and qualified bidder for $72,700. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 1st, 2021. Madam Commissioner, once again, here is Director Sacco.
This resolution is to award the contract for the Greenways Trails and Recreation Grant Program, also known as GTRP, for the Scranton Veterans Memorial Park Project on the site of Scranton High School. Cholouski Enterprises LLC was determined as the lowest, most responsible bidder in the amount of $72,700. This is for the completion of site amenities, including signage, curbing, and landscaping. This will essentially complete the Scranton Veterans Memorial Park Project. Does anyone have any questions?
If there aren't any questions, do I have a motion to approve 21-0228?
Motion.
Second. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolution 21-0229, entering into a web services sales agreement.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approved the web services sales agreement with Revised LLC, aka Revised Software Systems, for the website redesign, hosting, and maintenance of the Lackawanna County site. And there be a further resolved in an effort to effectively respond to the critical need of disseminating information and creating an online platform for the public to have access to forms and information to assist in the safe reopening of our county. Lackawanna County Commissioners are entering into an agreement with Revised LLC, aka Revised Software Systems, with the American Rescue Plan Act funds to assist in responding to the ongoing repercussions left by the COVID-19 pandemic. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 1st, 2021. Madam Commissioner, I believe this is going to be Brenda or Tracy speaking upon the website with the -- with the art program.
So, basically, for the website, we are looking to be able to disseminate information easily to the public, also to have forms available online, so the public doesn't necessarily have to enter our building. So, again, it's mitigation efforts in responding to the COVID-19 pandemic, and this is an eligible use of the American Rescue Act funds. Anyone have any questions?
If there aren't any questions, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0229?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolution 21-0230, approving an extension with PennDOT. Brian.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approved a 12-month time extension with PennDOT for the reimbursement agreement for the Fourth Street Bridge Replacement Project in Clifton Township. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 1st, 2021. Here to speak upon that, Madam Commissioner, is our engineer, Mr. Frank Suma.
Good morning. This resolution is, as Mr. Jefferson said, in regard to the county's Fourth Street Bridge Replacement Project. This project will be finishing construction over the next few weeks, so the contract will be finished with this fieldwork. But this resolution will extend -- will be for a time extension for the PennDOT reimbursement contract that Lackawanna County has. PennDOT is recommending we extend the timeframe of this contract to allow central office time to finish the contractual closeout documents and continue reimbursing the county.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0230?
Motion. Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 21-0231, entering into a letter of amendment.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve and enter into a letter of amendment with PennDOT for the reimbursement of the College Road Bridge Replacement Project in La Plume. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on September 1st, 2021. Madam Commissioner, once again, here is our engineer, Mr. Frank Suma.
This is another PennDOT reimbursement project, as Mr. Jefferson said, for the College Road Bridge Replacement, with another PennDOT reimbursement contract already in place. This project -- this reimbursement contract is 100% reimbursable by PennDOT. This letter of amendment would increase the reimbursable dollars from PennDOT back to Lackawanna County in order to increase proposed construction costs. When this agreement was first established, it was probably nearly 10 years ago, and due to environmental clearances required by PennDOT, the construction date had pushed a few years. So, now, this letter of amendment would increase the reimbursable dollars back to Lackawanna County to account for construction inflation costs primarily.
Any questions for Frank? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0231?
Motion. Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
If I just could have a few minutes, I wanted to say how much I appreciated this honor today, but it's an honor for all of Lackawanna County, and I would not be the person I am without getting up here and telling everyone that this was entirely a team effort, from three Commissioners that supported everything we needed to do in our community, to take care of the public health, to our Chief of Staff, to individuals like Brenda Sacco and Joe Durenzo, and Rick Notteri behind me, Connie O'Seansey and Tom Arduino back at the building, Mark Dorn and his entire team, and all of our EMA and Emergency Management Crew. This was a massive effort by Lackawanna County, and we only did it because we all work well together. We work as a team, and we're provided in an environment that we can serve the community the best we can. So, while I am humbled and appreciative today, I could not -- I could not not thank my colleagues and friends and, you know, tell everyone what an honor it is to serve with them every day. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone else from the public?
I just want to thank everyone for the proclamation on suicide prevention. It really means a lot to our Lackawanna County residents who've lost someone to suicide and who fight that feeling of wanting to end your life every day. And I especially like to thank Chris Schirmack for helping us establish the Lackawanna County Suicide Prevention Alliance, of which all the county offices and -- how many members?
Almost 100.
Almost 100 members of the alliance in order to make Lackawanna County a safer, more welcoming to people who have thoughts of suicide and to families who've lost someone to suicide. So, thank you, and thank you, Chris, very much.
You're welcome. So, I was going to speak on that in a minute, but the reason this whole thing got started with our County Suicide Prevention Alliance is Kathy Wallace approached me -- when was that?
Last year.
It was a year, yeah.
September 12.
September 12. And said, "We'd like to create this," and we've been striking out for the past few years. So, we had it in a couple months with the help of Mariana Kavitch from NAMI and with Marion Colbert from Behavioral Health here, we just -- it snowballed, and it's been a -- we have great meetings, and I think we're going to help a lot of people, so.
Really gave a lot of hope to people who've lost someone, that Lackawanna County is doing something.
It gets the information out. People don't know where to turn, so it's just growing every day. So, it's awesome, and I just thank everybody for all their assistance, and I do want to get a picture with the proclamation before we leave, so, thank you.
And if anybody wants to go to ZOMO's or Northern Lights, $10 off average.
The phone number? What, Mary, what phone number do we use now for the Suicide Prevention Alliance? I know we have the 211 number, but is there another one?
So, for individuals who are thinking, having thoughts of suicide, or just to join the alliance? For community members who want to join the alliance, they can call 570-346-5741, which is the County Behavioral Health/Intellectual Disability Program Office. For individuals who are having thoughts of suicide.
They're not going to hear this. For those who are watching who want to hear this.
Okay.
I would start over with the phone.
Yes, yes. So, for interested community members who are interested in joining the Lackawanna County Suicide Prevention Alliance, they can call the County Behavioral Health/Intellectual Disability Program Office at 570-346-5741. For any individual who's having thoughts of suicide, they should call -- they can call 211 or 911. They can also call the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline at 1-800-273-TALK, T-A-L-K. And Marie probably has some additional comments.
Well, no, I mean, I just want to echo everyone's gratitude for this. Mariana Kavitch with NAMI in Scranton. NAMI is a national alliance on mental illness. We provide support, education, information to anybody who's struggling with their mental health, individuals, family members, friends, et cetera. I'm so very grateful for how this alliance has taken off. As Commissioner Schirmack said, you know, it was just within a matter of weeks, I believe it was the end of September when we first met, and by, like, as a small group, and by December, we're meeting as a large group. In addition to the number that Marianne Colbert shared, we also have a Facebook page which has our meetings pinned to the top of that page. We meet the second Tuesday of each month at 5:00 at the 911 Center in Jessup, and anyone within interest is welcome. We are -- we've -- those meetings are hybrid, so they're also on Zoom. You would need to contact the county offices to get access to that link, or just show up and introduce yourself at the meetings. We know, you know, one in five of us struggle with our mental health, and we know that at least that many struggle with either thoughts of suicide or losing someone to suicide, when, you know, suicide is not -- it's not an individual experience. It's an experience that affects everybody. And so, I think, I'm guessing, most of us here in one way or another have been touched by that, so please, you know, consider being a part of it, or at least supporting our efforts. And thank you to everyone.
Andrew's a suicide prevention -- suicide prevention walk up at NAOD on September 11 at 9:00, and we'd like to invite you there to show everyone how important this is.
You three ladies are a wealth of information.
Yeah. And that's what kick-started this conversation at that walk. Yeah? Last year. Chris showed up at the, it's called Sheer New Jersey Walk, and that was on a Saturday, and by Tuesday, we had Chris calling, and we had something set up, so we're thrilled.
Does anybody else have anything from the public? Okay, then.
Why don't you do the pictures with the proclamations now? Before --
Okay. We'll do the photographs.
You want to do -- let's do the mental health first, and then we'll do the leukemia and --
Okay.
Because that's always ready.
Well, Frank, I think you should be involved in that.
Yeah, you're doing the mental health one.
Three Commissioners, you're front, please.
Yeah, you guys go. You want to do the mental health one, and then we'll do the other one.
I am, but I'm going to ask you. Take a picture also, if you don't mind. Thank you so much.
That was valid.
Yes.
Jerry, how about coming over on this -- no, you know what? No, stay there, stay there. We'll go right there. My fault. Mark, I mean my way, I know. Everybody smile.
Thank you so much.
I'll get another coffee.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you.
That would be great.
Thank you.
I'll --
I'll get some more, yep.
Sure. We can talk about transmissions. We can talk about couples. We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. You want to hear Jason, Representative Chad Kozarowski?
Yeah. Jason.
Jason. There you go. There's always the little bubble.
Wait, switch. Because you're the one who gave it to him.
There we go. We can couple them. Very good.
No way, no.
Okay.
You're good.
How are you, Bridget?
I'm good, Jerry.
I just --
Thanks.
When you're done, we're talking about the vaccines, the transmissions.
I see the restroom. Okay. Can we call a two-minute recess?
Whatever you want.
I'm going to call just a two-minute recess.
They got a whole system. It's pretty neat how they do it. That's the concept, great idea. Don't worry, we'll help you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye. Okay, I'm going to call this meeting back to order, and we are now on Commissioners' other business. Jerry?
I just want to thank the Musick Borough officials and the Suicide Prevention Awareness and the Blood Cancer. But Jason Kavulich, people don't actually realize what went on in Lackawanna County with this vaccination program. It's the fact that it's actually, other than the two counties that had hospital systems in them, I think it was Montour, where they have Lehigh Valley, and the other one, and there were smaller counties, no one was even close to Lackawanna County. And that was due to the efforts of Brian Jeffers and Jason Kavulich, and a whole bunch of other people, but they were the spearhead of it, and it made a difference. I mean, as difficult as this COVID is, it's not going, you know, it's not going well. It really isn't. It's, you know, it's a surge, and, you know, someone that works with Jason, Bill Browning, has actually begun to create in Human Services a health department, and they hired a legitimate epidemiologist. And there was a meeting --
Okay, I'm going to call this meeting back to order. And we are now on Commissioner's other business. Jerry?
I just want to thank the Music Borough officials and the Suicide Prevention Awareness and the Blood Cancer. But Jason Kavulich, people don't actually realize what went on in Lackawanna County with this vaccination program. It's, the fact that it's actually, other than the two counties that had hospital systems in them, I think it was Montour, where they have Lehigh Valley and the other one, and they were smaller counties. No one was even close to Lackawanna County. And that was due to the efforts of Brian Jeffers and Jason Kavulich, and a whole bunch of other people. But they were the spearhead of it. And it made a difference. I mean, as difficult as this COVID is, it's not going, you know, it's not going well. It really isn't. It's, you know, it's a surge, and, you know, someone that works with Jason, Bill Browning, has actually begun to create in Human Services a health department, and they hired a legitimate epidemiologist. And there was a meeting, what day was that, Brian? Monday?
Monday.
Monday. Monday. And she said, "It's a, it's a real concern, and we should be cautious in what we do. And if we can get the rest of the people vaccinated, it will be very helpful." So, we have three offices in the building now that have people that have cases, and they're all vaccinated. But they're not, they're not in the hospital, and they're not getting deathly ill, but they're, they're still getting COVID. So, this is, this is a serious event. And it's, you know, again, it's something that we have to keep, you know, we can't let your guard down. We've got to keep fighting. And again, thanks to Brian Jeffers, Jason, and a whole bunch of other people, we're, hopefully, we're going in the right direction. But other than that, I just want to thank everybody, and have a nice day.
Chris?
I want to thank everybody for coming as well on this nice rainy day. Last meeting, we table a motion that I wanted to start reading correspondence from public via email. So, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to untable the motion, and I'd like to do that today.
Well, I think the way this is trending, from what I, we can see so far, we may very well be back in virtual, we might be back on Zoom meetings, but I don't have an issue with it. But I think that we'll wait and see how this develops a little further before we get to that point. So, all I have to say about that.
I mean, I think that we should keep the status quo, which is in person while we're in person. And then, if we go to virtual, we will go back to accepting emails. That's my opinion as well.
Frank, correct me if I'm wrong, but if Chris made a motion to untable his previous motion, I believe that has to be voted on?
Well, it does. If there's a second.
Right. If there, so there's a motion on the table. If there's a second, then you would discuss, obviously, on the question, and then take a vote. So, there's a motion. I don't, I don't know if there's a second.
No. Anything else?
We still have my email address if anybody has any concerns, schirmackc@lackawannacounty.org. And then, second, it goes back to the delinquent taxpayers in Scranton. There's, there's a situation, I don't know, we have to find some answers, but I've got multiple, multiple liens that were filed, and they were all sent to 388 Ocean Ave, Revere, Massachusetts. So, I don't understand if these were filed incorrectly, if they all went there. These are just 15 or so samples here. So, if these people were not properly served, I just don't know. So, we have to get an answer to that.
I think Frank can answer that.
Well, and I can say, Commissioner Schirmack did apprise me prior to the meeting that he had received that email, and I indicated to him that I would certainly look into it. I don't know, Commissioner, if it's a matter of the liens were filed against, obviously, city properties, and the owner of those properties is located in Massachusetts. I don't know if that's the case, but we'll get an answer to the question, certainly, and apprise you.
They're all different people. So, I just, it seems to be a computer issue, or, I have no idea. I have no idea what it is, but something's not right.
I'll address it for you. Yeah, we'll get, we'll get an answer on it, for sure.
And then, the other, you know, in the paper the other day was the, the upset sale, and there was no properties from Scranton listed there. So, you know, I would think there should have been. I continue to say, we're treating these, the people in Scranton different than the people in the rest of the county. So, it's just something that we need to look at and make sure that everybody's beating, being treated fairly. And then, again, on that, we got to make sure that these liens and notices were all sent to the proper addresses, and these people were properly notified. So, we'll look into it.
The city of Scranton is treated differently because the city of Scranton is different than any other city in the Commonwealth. It's a 2A city. That's what the state law says. We've gone over this.
I feel like it's Groundhog Day.
Yeah, yeah, Groundhog Day. We've gone over this. It's the only county, only city that we can do that with. They've asked us to do it. They drafted the legislation. They passed the legislation. They signed the legislation. This is not something we just made up. Mr. Schirmack voted yes on this when we began it. Now that it become, it becomes a political football, now it's, it's just getting absolutely, we tried to have a meeting yesterday, Frank?
We're in communications with the city as far as setting up a meeting. We're willing to do that. The city's willing to do that, and that's our plan to do that. We're just literally, logistically trying to coordinate. We tried to do it yesterday. We tried to do it today. The plan is to do it, hopefully, within the next week. We're just waiting to hear back from the city now on some proposed dates.
And again, they, they collected much more money than they did in previous years.
Ten times, like, five times, like, well, seven.
Three times.
Seven to 750 is what they used to make, $700 to $750,000. And by, we anticipate them making somewhere around six or seven million dollars by the end of the year.
I mean, they, and they paid a private firm to do it.
I would like to be a part of this meeting. I knew nothing about a meeting, so.
Well, it hasn't been scheduled yet.
It hasn't.
We have, I have, I'm sorry.
No, I apologize.
The last meeting was held with the attorneys and our chief of staff, and I made it, I personally made it clear that I think that we, the, us officials, our commissioners, and the mayor will have to be present for the next meeting. So, you will get notice of it.
And you will, Commissioner, as will everyone. Everyone's been copied on the email string and strain, Attorney LaBelle, Commissioner Schirmack, Commissioner Natariani, and Commissioner Dominic. So, literally, we are just simply looking to schedule the meeting, and we have requested that all elected officials be present, the three county commissioners, as well as the mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I just have one thing. Stacy Lang was very nice with WNEP. She did a little segment last night on my police training, but I just wanted to get it out there again. So, the county partnered with Lackawanna College for a police training, which is going to basically address six areas: behavioral health and substance abuse, de-escalation, individuals with special needs and mental health, issues, human perceptions and how they affect behavior, communications, bias, profiling, and procedural justice, sensitivity, diversity, and inclusion. Basically, in a nutshell, we're trying to address de-escalation and also giving the police the proper tools to not only keep situations, regardless of if they're at somebody's home, or if they're pulling somebody over, but that they have the proper tools to make sure that the situation does not escalate into an issue of violence. And, you know, so the main parts that I really wanted to focus on, and which we are, are the de-escalation, the racial profiling and bias, because sometimes there is conscious or unconscious bias, and also people with mental health and substance abuse. Our police officers need to understand that these people have illnesses, and that they need to be handled, not handled, but addressed in a certain way. So, last night, she did interview Scranton Police Chief Leonard Namaka. Did I say that right?
Namaka.
Namaka, I was close. And he indicated, and I was very happy to see, that he plans to send his officers to the training. So, I'm just asking for all the other chiefs in the county to please send your officers to this training. Right now, we have four dates. The first one starts a week Monday, so September 19, 13th, September 20th, September 24th, and September 27th. The first two dates, Monday, the 13th, and Monday, the 20th, are from 3:30 PM until 8:00 PM. And then, Friday, the 24th, and Monday, the 27th, are from 8:30 AM to 1:00 PM. It's at our 911 Center. Food and beverages will be provided. We're also, when I attended the chief's meeting, one of their issues was who's going to pay for the overtime or the backfill when they send their, their officers to this training? We are. So, first of all, they have to, anyone who wants to attend this training has to preregister. The information's on our website and on our Facebook page. And then, the chiefs will have to submit a form with Brenda Sacco of the Economic Development Department for reimbursement of any overtime or backfill. So, there's really no downside. It's four and a half hours of C, CLE, or is it CL? I don't know. CCLE or CLE, something like that. They're MOPAC-approved, which means that they will go towards, police officers, like lawyers, have to have so many hours of continuing education. So, these four and a half hours have been approved by MOPAC to count towards that. So, and it was funded by Comotha, Pennsylvania, and the Lackawanna County Economic Development Office through the Economic Development Community Development Initiatives Grant Program. So, please, if you know anyone or know any police officers or the chiefs, just get the word out, and please have them sign up. And we will probably, hopefully, if it's successful, schedule more dates in the future. And right now, we're targeting the police officers in the county, but we're hoping to then move on to Sheriff's Department, our correctional officers, and our detectives in the DA's office. Basically, anyone who comes into contact with the general public who may have any type of issue. We never had an issue like George Floyd, or all those other incidents of violence that you see on the news, and we don't ever want to have one. So, this is just us being proactive. We have great police officers, but you can always learn something. So, that's what we're hoping to accomplish here. Okay?
I'm not sure how this works. Can I add something to that?
Sure.
Just for, for community awareness, I guess. We, we do have a CIT program. We've had a CIT program, Crisis Intervention Team program, in our, in northeast Pennsylvania since 2010. We've trained over 600 officers. CIT is a 40-hour, evidence-based, internationally-recognized program. First day is mental health first aid, an eight-hour, evidence-based, internationally-recognized program. We do have programs. I, this sounds like it would be a complement to that. That's a 40-hour program. We've offered reimbursement in the past. We've had law enforcement, corrections officers, detectives, DA, as, as Commissioner Dominic said, anybody whose job takes them into contact with somebody who might be in a mental health crisis. Law enforcement officers are trained to recognize mental health issues. They're trained in de-escalation. They get six hours de-escalation, and then four hours role-playing of those skills that they learned. They're exposed to individuals who live with mental illness. They're exposed to family members. There's a site visit that's involved. That's existed since 2010. And I'm happy to hear that we have another program that may complement that. But I just wanted to let folks know that we do, Lackawanna County, started in Lackawanna County, started in Scranton, spread to Lackawanna County, spread to Susquehanna and Wayne County. We have trained folks as far away as, we've trained park, park rangers from the Delaware Water Gap. We've trained, our, our Lackawanna County prison has, I mean, I.
Can I ask you two questions?
Absolutely.
How does somebody get involved? Like, where do they find information on it?
You can call me. I, Mariana Kavitch, NAMI, I'm one of the coordinators of this program.
What's your phone number?
My phone number's 570-342-1047.
And will they receive, are there MOPAC-approved credits for that?
There's not MOPAC-approved credits for that. We're, there, we're, we worked on, you know, trying to get them for the mental health first aid, but it's, it's a free 40-hour, again, evidence-based program that does address mental health, does address folks with intellectual disabilities, does address drug and alcohol, and we do have a cultural awareness and element to, to the program. And it's, it was chosen, it was chosen in response to the shooting death of Brenda Williams in '29 as, as a program that best fit our community's needs because of its flexibility. You know, we, we, having a larger group of maybe older adults in our community, we can make sure that we address older adults and mental health. If, if we get word from our officers that, that we need some more information about autism, we'll have somebody come in. And it's all local presenters who are doing it. And so, not only do they get the experience and the information, but they learn about the resources that are in the community. Scattered throughout the 40-hour week, we have folks from Area Agency on Aging, folks from Community Intervention Center, from all the different resources in the community, come in and give little talks about their resources. So, officers are more aware of what's available to them. Because we know very often, it's a mental health crisis, but there's something else driving that crisis. And so, if they can help them get connected to those services. Folks from Scranton Counseling Center, they're educated in the Mental Health Procedures Act, and so, the officers understand what it, what criteria needs to be met for somebody to be involuntarily hospitalized, because we found that that was a great frustration. That was a real roadblock for officers, was not understanding what, not understanding that act. And once they have a greater understanding, and once they have access to resources, it helps them to, to, to respond to those folks better.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
And I just want to say, when I went to the chief's meeting, I mean, I know, as an attorney, and Frank and Donnie can speak to this, continuing legal education courses are, can be somewhat painful at times. I mean, you know.
I love them.
I mean, nobody likes to do it. So, but, you know, that's why we made sure that these were MOPAC-approved. It shouldn't be the sole motivation for these officers to go, but we tried to give it the added benefit, because they work hard. And I get them not wanting to have to go to additional training, or additional time away from their family. So, that's why we did that. And we did work very closely with John Chilary from Lackawanna County College to make sure that these courses are very progressive, and that they're not duplicative of what is offered in Act 120. So, I love your idea as well, and hopefully, we can get the police officers motivated, and just be proactive, and, and prevent any problems from, from happening. And to keep everybody safe, police officers and our citizens. Anything else?
Yeah, I can finish here a couple of things real quick, if you don't mind.
Sure.
As Commissioner Natariani had already mentioned, we met on Monday, and the reason we met on Monday with Dr. Charles and other county officials was that Sunday night, Lackawanna County was the last county to be raised into the high category for transmission rates. We are borderline right now, but it is projected to rise continuously, as, as Dr. Charles does the data every day. We'll continue to monitor this. We're going to have another meeting on Friday. We'll probably have another meeting on Tuesday, the day after Labor Day, see where we are. And then, we'll end up coming back with recommendations for the commissioners to put into place as far as where we will be for the next, like, October, really, if we're going to be moving to virtual meetings and that. There have been some breakthrough cases, as Mr. Natariani has said. It's individuals who've had runny nose and stuff like that, and got tested, and they tested positive. However, we still had to have them out of work, which is difficult. Our vaccination rate for 12 years old and above is 71% at this point. Our target date for 80% fully vaccinated for 12 years old and above is November 1st. We have a clinic coming up this Friday, September 3rd, from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM at the Farmer's Market in Scranton, down on 900 Bering Avenue. And as everyone could hear, we can hear the rain pounding the top of the roof. The 6:00 AM meeting that we had today about, the National Weather Service had today, is now projecting from three to five, now to four to six inches of rain in our county. It's due to a stationary front that is holding all the tropical Gulf water right above us, and our EMA officials are keeping us up to date on an hour-to-hour basis.
So, we're just basically going to keep our eye on the ball, and then make determinations as we move forward with regard to whether or not we're going to switch to, like, Zoom, staggered staff.
That is correct.
Things of that nature.
That is correct. We will know probably by, I'm going to say, the week after, the week after Labor Day.
I'm always in the 2%. If, if, if there's a medication with 700 side effects, and it's only a 2% chance of you getting that side effect, I'm that girl. And that's just how my life is. And I had the Pfizer vaccine, and I had zero, and Jerry did too. We got it together, and neither one of us had any type of side effect. So, please, we're encouraging you to get vaccinated, so we can just, I feel like we're going, or spinning our wheels a little, we're going backwards a little bit. And I really want to keep moving forward. So, any, anybody else?
Make a motion for adjourned.
All right. Jerry, I'll second it. On the question, all in favor? Hi. Thank you.